You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the February eighth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot X S Laporte County dot org.
Okay, God bless everyone. Thank you for joining the Michigan City Commission of Social Status of African American Males Board Meeting today. Today is February eighth. And at the beginning of the meeting, we would like to at least start out with the pledge allegiance, please.
I may, if I may.
Yes, sir.
And after that, can we just stand for a moment of silence?
Yeah.
For Nicholas who was murdered, beat to death in Memphis, that let him know that we we stand with the brothers and sisters.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nature, honor, God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for bringing that to my attention too. Okay, you guys, we got our host and our stuff taken care. So we would like to start off with a roll call before we can see if we have a call. But we can begin the meeting. We all have a secretary now, so I think I'll do the roll call unless I let Mr. Millsap or Commissioner Hogan do it if they want.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, could we just, uh, we have to do the roll call before we decide who the secretary is?
Yeah. We have to make sure we have a corner, even have a meeting.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
You do the roll call since you started.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mister Mister McCormick?
Present.
Washington? Miss Moore? Miss Conley? Mister Lee Johnson, I'm sorry, Mister Johnson?
Present.
And Reverend?
Present.
And?
Present.
Okay, so Mister President. Good, she's here.
But Stacy? Go on, continue.
Okay, Stacy. Okay, uh, we have a corner, Mr. Chair.
You didn't call me yet, did you?
Oh, you was first.
Okay, I'm our president.
Yeah. You was first.
Okay.
We have a corner.
Thank you, Mister.
Start the meeting, right?
And with that being said, we need to move with the.
I ain't say take over the meeting, I said just call the.
I was just making a statement that with that being. Cause I ain't doing that work, okay?
Okay, brothers and sisters, we here today on a joyous occasion. We have to fulfill the position of the secretary that need to be fulfilled. We tabled it until this next month, which is this month. Um, I will open the floor for nominations for the Secretary of Social Status of African American Males.
I move that we um change the agenda to to move this up in the agenda, so we're gonna discuss this.
Move nominations?
No, secretary is down that old.
Oh, that's. Yeah, yeah, we definitely got to fill our positions right on.
About earlier.
Okay, yeah, we moved it up. I said in that we can go with that with a yay. Everybody yay to change the agenda, get secretary out the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yay. Okay, now I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the secretary. If there's any nominations, please feel free to put the name out there and we'll do a voting process.
I think we go back, um, we was waiting on the answer from Miss Conley. True. Um, so before I even nominate her, I wanna see if she has her position, if she wants to do it.
Yay, thank you, Miss Conley, your appointment second.
I nominate Miss Conley second.
Unanimous.
Okay. A roll call on the vote, I will, I think everybody yay, but roll call, I'll do it administration for like right quick. You just relax, Miss Stacy, I'll do it. Roll call Pastor Johnson? Yay. Miss Moore?
Yay.
Miss Conley?
Yay.
Pastor Brother?
Yay.
Killer fly, yay. Rodney McCormick?
Hi.
Millsap, yep, Cogan?
Yay.
Yay. Yep, bingo.
On a lot of, we also had Dwayne Hurt roll call, he's on.
Yeah, he said he's on Zoom. Oh, he made it on Zoom. Oh, he's attending and he's here, so I see him there. Mister Hurt, are you present?
The panelists did not accept, so unfortunately, I don't think that you can.
He's probably right.
He was up there.
Okay.
I mean, he's online, so he's listening, but he doesn't have the ability to talk.
Oh, okay, that's cool. Okay, so we can chop past the herd up as president, so he can get his stipend. Okey dokey, you missed that, let me check out the vote. Okay, reading of the mission statement, for some reason.
Yeah, make fun of order. I vote yay for Linda Conley.
Yes, ma'am. Stacy, don't be mad at me. Okay, y'all, um, next we go to the uh reading of the mission statement, and I was about to say unfortunately, I never bring it.
I got it.
Thank you, Mister Commissioner Moore, I mean, oh, Lord, Cogan.
The mission of the Indiana Commission on the social status of black males is to study the social conditions of the state's black male population, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities and make recommendations to improve the educational, socioeconomic employment and other circumstances for Hoosiers. The commission serves policymakers and public interest groups as well as the media community organizers and members of the general public.
Thank you, Commissioner Hogan.
Thank you.
Okay, we got the January two thousand twenty three meeting minutes. Uh, we didn't have the secretary at that meeting and um we have to get caught up on the meeting minutes with quite a few meeting minutes, months, half months. Me and Vice President McCormick got brought up a instant, what we considering taking a stipend out of our budget to get our, get caught up with our minutes from someone? Have someone come in, a person that he has an interest to go back on the minutes and catch us all up for them past months, because they're months and months and months ago, you know, so they got to do a little, you know, get it all together, so we can be all square one. And we won't have to put that burden on Miss Conley just jumping in that spot and have to go back almost seven, eight meetings with meeting minutes. Um, we ain't going, I ain't no one for not having them, we just gonna move on and go forward. So um, I will let Mister McCormick, did you give any confirmations with that?
They are willing to do the minutes and I think it would be appropriate for us to do that. I will get a price. And we agree on it. If not, I'm probably just pay for it out of my pocket, because we need to make sure those minutes are turned into clerk's office. And Miss Conley, we do have somebody that will try to aid in this issue when they can with the minutes as well, uh, because those are very useful for us to have. Um, we're not gonna, we can't do what we've been doing, so we gotta get this done.
Great, sound like a team effort.
I will have to have responds uh next meeting, before next meeting.
Before next meeting, so these two thousand twenty three meeting minutes, can we table it the next meeting, but we don't have them as of now? Table it to next meeting before we can get them approved and see if they done, Miss Benny?
Yes, I make a motion that we table the January twenty twenty three meeting minutes until next meeting.
Second.
Mister Chair.
Oh, it wasn't. Thank you, Miss Stacy Benny.
Mister Chair, uh, question, is January the only minutes that we?
No, we have about eight, about eight months worth of, and one month is almost three meeting minutes in one month. I don't know what that was about.
I wasn't aware of that, so.
Yeah, yeah, they sent it out via email, but I think it was only directed for me and Mister McCormick.
Miss Lee, Miss Lee did keep three months or maybe four months of the minutes. And then our last secretary, um, we didn't get the minutes. And again, we gotta get this done, so.
Yeah.
And then we don't, we aren't gonna drag this on, so we have to get it done. And I will give you all the exact dates of the meeting minutes that's missing. And let's just try to get it approved and get it done.
Because that is a statute of our board, we have to have them meetings, or we get shut out, we don't give them minutes, right? That's a state regulation. Miss Kalavich know how about them rules, don't you?
What I'm doing now.
Okay, we can move on, so we just, oh, we need a roll call on table in the minutes. Roll call, start Pastor Johnson, I'm table minister next month. Yay. Miss Moore, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Secretary Conley?
Yes.
Brother, my brother, why did I forget your name now? Oh, yeah, I said Carol. I love you so much.
Love you too.
Okay. I cannot fly, yay.
I.
I.
I. Yay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, that was a unanimous thing to do right there. Uh, we get an update on Treasury report. Now, she do be giving it to us email, so, but she just pop up again.
Okay, so as you stated, I did submit the um January twenty twenty three Treasury report via email. And our ending balance is six thousand ninety eight dollars and ninety two cents.
Good job, thank you.
Motion to accept Treasury's report.
Second.
Roll call, start our pastor Johnson?
I.
Miss Commissioner Moore?
I.
Secretary Conley? Brother, brother Carol?
I.
Killer fly, I. Rodney McCormick?
I.
I.
Millsap, Hogan?
I.
I.
Yeah.
I.
Okay, unanimous, great job, you guys, getting on done. This might be the quickest meeting ever. Okay, we can get on to new business. Okay, we get on to new business. Um, new business, we have uh put on an agenda, Vice President McCormick would like to discuss a letter. And we have to give him access to that. You have the floor, Vice President.
Okay, um, as we know, funds have been real hard to come by for us, for whatever reason. Not gonna point no fingers or anything, so I'm asking for permission to work with the secretary and the treasurer to put together an ask letter to all the organizations that we post on our Facebook page and ask them for a donation. Um, for once, I wanna take the money that we raise and it's time for us to do one of the two things. Celebrate Dr. King Day by this committee, or we can put our Black History Month program together by this program, by by us. Um, I'm tired of us handing out flyers, no disrespect of someone else's program that they're putting on. It's time for us to step up to the to the to the plate and do what's right. Um, as we know, some of the Black History Month programs that do go on, they exclude a lot of us. For whatever reason, they just exclude us. We wanna open our program up to everybody, but in order for us to do that, we have to raise money. And I think this is just one of the ways we can raise money, and we can start, we can start off at our good old city council. Who hasn't given us a dime, hasn't done nothing for us. We can work with the mayor, we can ask for money, because if I can go over to La Porte County and go to a Republican state and work with the Republicans and the Democrat and come back with four thousand dollars. The city should be at least willing to match that, if not double it. The ARP funds should be for all of us, right?
Yeah.
That to enhance what we're doing here. We have a great educational employment out program that Mister Hogan and Mister Millsap put together, but we also needed money to go along with it. And we always short funds, and I just think that if you have the gumption to ask us for some money, you should be willing to tell us what the money is for, but you should be willing to give us back the same amount or something in return. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you, Vice President McCormick. I'm not gonna uh intercede or carry on with that, but I give the floor to any commissioner that wanna speak on that.
That's something that we can vote on.
And Mike can come on, Mister Chair, I'm sorry.
Is that something that we're, I guess, is that a motion that we're able to vote on? Yes, I I guess after discussion, but if we want to, I motion that um you'll allow me, Miss Benny and Miss Conley to work on the ask letter.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to act for an ax letter. We do a roll call. Secretary Conley, God bless you. You can continue with the roll calls now. Mister Chair.
Can we uh?
Okay, discussion first.
Mister Chair, uh, instead of uh naming it an ask letter, is it possible we could just draft a request for a donation?
Yeah, that's what.
Versus versus, because that ask.
Well, that's what I thought it was. It's a donate.
So so definitely, uh, he's just making a motion to uh draft a request for donation letter from our commission.
For record, because you wanna make us.
Okay, yes, it will, um, we will take the ass letter off and it'd be asked for donation letter.
Request for donation.
Yes, request for donation. And that we, it with their approval of the board before and after, so when we get done with the letter, everybody will read it before we send it out.
Brother Cox.
Yeah, I had a question. You mentioned uh addressing this to those people who we include. And now lose that our statements, that right, you say you're people who we include. Council, whatever, they got people who have, who are on our back. You actually, we just directed to them? No, okay. Um, we have our Facebook page, which will be coming up here shortly, but we we take a lot of information, Miss Moore's uh uh, she's done it for a long time. We'll take other people's uh programs and we put them on our page. We're supposed to run our page. So we advertise on our page, we advertising for them, but yet they are yet to give back to this organization. Got you. No disrespect, it's just we want respect, so.
So we can't make a demand letter.
Uh, fair exchange, no robbery, but uh, yeah.
That's that's why you use a wording request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, motion by Brother McCormick and a second by, was it Miss Benny?
With me.
Oh, okay, Mister Hogan, Commissioner Hogan. We get a roll call vote of Secretary Conley?
Mister Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Millsap?
I.
Commissioner Hogan?
I.
Commissioner Fly?
Yay.
Commissioner Carol?
I.
Commissioner Conley?
I.
Commissioner Moore?
I.
Commissioner Johnson?
I.
Commissioner Benny?
I.
Okay, we have a nine minutes.
Okay, we have unanimous, unanimous um vote with which it passed, so we will um get that letter drafted up and um how will we uh? Oh, we'll just figure out which ones we're gonna send it to after further investigation, right? Or we just gonna put it on our Facebook page and also send it out to them Pacific organizations?
Yes, we have mail it out and um it it'll be a group effort, so it'd be three of us and we'll come up with how we're gonna do it, but it'd be a mail out.
Okay, well, I'm sure you guys sort out the details to it and stuff, because I'm sure some organization is gonna wanna know probably what we wanna, or exactly, whatever, and that's understandable. Okay, uh, we can continue on, any discussion about this before any more discussion. Okay, thank you, guys.
Commissioner McCormick, thank you for spearheading this effort, greatly needed.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, better now than never, you know, never too late. So we got a new business, uh, subtitle B, which is face Facebook page access, that's our media source for this board. And and uh, as of right now, we don't have access to the actual password to make any kind of changes, updates from appointments, from anything that's personnel part. And so we don't have the access to the Facebook uh password, and ultimately, if we don't regain the page, Facebook password or or whatever information it is to log in and change those things, we ultimately might have to just recreate it.
Can I um?
Yes, sir, McCormick, Sir Hogan.
I think it was a little bit unclear from the emails how I was given access. The former president uh never gave me or using him a password. All he did was add me as an admin, and so when you became president or prior to that, all I did was the exact same thing to you, was add you as an admin as well. Um, but when I was, you know, running the Facebook page, I did not see anything that um we were unable to do as far as permission goes with the with the current tool set that we have. So I'm not saying that it may not be necessary for security purpose perhaps to start a new page, I'm just saying I don't know if I see the utility of starting a new page if we have all the permissions and all the abilities um that you would as an admin. Now, I could be missing something.
Yeah, I'm gonna entune you. I'm gonna give you a nice clear understanding.
Okay.
So what what what's happened, uh, I think I know exactly what what it is.
Okay.
See, uh, the creator of the page was Marty, the prior president, and so when he created the page, I'm pretty sure it was a junction off of his page, you know, because once you in there, you just create, they say you wanna make a business page or something like that, and he made it like that. So I think the ultimate password is actually his password to his regular Facebook, you know, his media source.
Yeah.
And so what I'm saying is, it probably would be cool to continue on if nobody is not being able to access anything, but but it is. I'm unable to add admin, you know, I don't know how you did it, but you know, that's why we don't have Vice President on there also for, because it says with important information, it's requiring for security purposes, you're you're logging, you know, your password. It did it to me over and over when we was contacting each other.
Okay.
And so that was just one of the, one of the things, which is a major thing. And then also is unable, we are unable to update the page so far as um our board, our members, you know, um, like the uh you know, the the main part, you know, it's personnel and stuff and things like that, which you have to go inside of the page to do, and they requiring your login. And and um, I think ultimately it's Marty's Facebook login, because even with him, he's unsure of it either.
We assume.
Neither, because he didn't have to pivot password yet, he just created the page, but when you go back to make crucial adjustments to that page, the ultimate password is his, his original Facebook page.
So you're recommending that we just establish a new Facebook?
No, not quite yet, no, because we have, we have so much history right there on that page. Um, I think I might need to reach out to Marty again and see if he can go and uh not only give us his fake, well, he'll even have to give it to us, go on there, log in and change, oh my God. Yeah, because if you change it, it's gonna change his password to his Facebook too.
May I interject, please?
Yeah, please do.
Um, there was an email that went out between myself, Mister Fly and Mister Hogan and Mister Corley. Um, Marty says he does not have, he gave everything he had to Mister Hogan. I'm not gonna go back and forth with whoever's what. The social status belongs to the people. It don't belong to one individual. And we need to, everything, point of contact is all one person, and it should not be that way. Uh, we have moved on and we need to make sure we keep that page the way it is, but we need to have full access, but when we gain access, I I need, we need to make sure that this doesn't happen again, and the the access passcode or whatever needs to be put in the clerk's office in our file. So this will never happen again. So at this point, I would like to move that we have the city attorney contact Facebook and we gain, we we will regain access, full accessibility to the page.
Without changing.
Well, we're not gonna change nothing, but once we gain full access, everything that has something to do with one individual, emails and phone numbers be updated to the current board, and we should keep it that way from now, from this moment forward.
Thank you, Vice President McCormick. Any more discussion? Anybody wanna have any slight discussion? Mister Hogan, do you know the password to uh the page that was established?
No, no, I was never, again, I was, um, when I joined the commission, the page already existed, and then when I became president, um, the former president just went into Facebook, added me as an admin, so I never had to put in a username or a password, so like if I wanna access it, I just click my picture in the top right corner of my personal account and just switch over to the social status account, but there's never, it never asked me for a username or password. And so and when Kenny, when President Fly came in, I did the same thing, I just searched his profile, added him as an admin, so you probably never had to do it using your password either, so.
I do, I do know the answer, Mister Commissioner Hogan, is uh by myself having five high youth and a couple other uh business pages. Ultimately, you don't have to put in your password and code, because they automatically generated from the page that you went off of to create the business page, so ultimately, it's his personal.
Yeah, I think we should really consider in light of what Vice President McCormick said, it may not be a bad idea to have a backup of establishing our own page, I mean, it's something right, it's gonna be lost, but you know, we're starting a new era, there's nothing that can't be reestablished, just something to consider, instead of wasting a bunch of if it's gonna take a long time back and forth with Facebook, maybe we can establish control now and just start building off what we have.
I I I wanna just correct the record. I never said creating on Facebook.
Right.
I think we just need to, um, I I think, I think what I've heard between us three and Mister Corley, he has no password. He gave everything he had to Mister Hogan, which made Mister Hogan look like he wasn't giving up the password. And it caused a little riff that was me, Lee squash. So Mister Corley, I don't believe that he's I don't know, I just, from what I understood, Mister Corley, I understand say that he didn't have the password no more.
He don't realize that the password is his password.
There's too much history on that page right now.
Right.
For us to just dissolve that way, but if we have to, we can go that way.
Right.
But I'm, that that's last.
Last resort.
Yeah, last resort. And again, I motion that uh we sent out a letter, maybe reach out to Mister Mister Corley one more time. But I think we, the the city attorney can write a letter to Facebook on our behalf, since it's a city page, it should be. And we can get that, we can gain access that way through the city attorney, or they will give us the guidance and which way to move.
Got you. Yes, makes sense.
Yeah, okay, great job, you guys. Any more discussion? Yes, Miss Conley?
I think as Mister McCormick was saying, that we should this on, that we should contact Mister Corley and make him aware of this, so that we all can, you know, like you say, avoid any type of conflict. So it doesn't look like we're going behind his back or calling him a liar or something of that nature. And let him know that since we can't get it, he doesn't have the information, that this is the city attorney will be doing what you said that they're gonna do.
Okay, any more further discussion upon this Facebook uh page access is open.
Mister Chair, was that in the formal motion, Secretary Conley?
No, I was just piggybacking.
Right.
Well, why don't you make that motion, I'll second.
I move that we uh reach out to former president Marty Corley to make him aware that we can't get into the Facebook page, and that since he doesn't have any of the information, we're gonna contact the city attorney to contact Facebook.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Secretary Conley and a second by Commissioner Millsap. We do a roll call, Miss Conley?
Yay. I.
I'll start again. Commissioner Cox?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hogan?
I.
Commissioner Mills?
I.
Mister McCormick?
I.
Commissioner Fly?
Yay.
Mister Carol?
I.
Commissioner Conley?
I.
Commissioner Moore? Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
I.
Commissioners Benny? Eyes have it.
Okay, eyes have a unanimous. Mister McCormick, you did have a motion before that, though, right?
It's.
Same today? Okay.
It's just fine, too. It's just fine too.
So we go on to old business, electing a new secretary. We moved that up to the top of the list so we can. Uh, cross that out. We took care of that. Great job, Ms. Conley. Secretary Conley, we appreciate you. You're stepping up and taking your role and responsibility of the board. Okay, we got uh subtitle six with the subcommittee and assignments. Um, first subcommittee is education. I know we tabled a lot of the subcommittees uh last month, so. Hopefully, we can get some kind of discussion on subcommittee.
Mr. Chair, reference to uh oh uh putting it on hold last month. The reason for that was because we want to make sure that everybody was reappointed.
Right.
Are we at that point? We are at that point.
Yeah, everybody uh is here. Oh, he haven't been reappointed yet? Okay, well, you still.
I haven't, I will, I supposed to get reappointed today through a mayor selection. But and I do know that we have Mike Jones, who is a new member.
Oh.
That's supposed to be here at our next meeting as well, so. Mike Jones will be joining us.
So what I think we should do, um, is just my suggestion, uh. I think we should carry on, talk about subcommittees. We we, you know, just fit in where you fit in. Well, you know, I mean, I don't think we should get to ten year two months down, you know, study, study. Let's just continue on and. Whoever be reappointed, we just get back in with the groove, slide on in and keep it moving. I don't think we should go stagnant. On all the subcommittee reports for two months in a row. I would like to continue on with the subcommittee. Uh, first would be education. Which myself and Mr. McCormick, uh, we still looking for cheer for that board.
Uh, Mr. Uh, uh, yeah, so. Mr. Curtis, but if we can have the secretary, if we can just go down this list. And put everybody on the, on the subcommittees that they wanna be on first right now. Yeah, and I think, and then the ones that's left over, we ask them when they get here.
Bingo, okay.
So if we can just go slow, so Ms. Conley can grab this and we can move on, so.
Okay, so we're gonna um open up the floor of, it ain't nominations, because you don't need to be nominated or appointed to be on a subcommittee. So with that education.
Point of origin.
Yes, sir.
You do have to.
Well, appointed, but not nominated, like, uh, yay, 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 but like, you know, you can't be on it.
Those are the record which is gonna go through and find out who's interested in what. Yeah, okay, starting with our secretary, she's gonna go each one.
You have myself, I'm sorry, you have myself. Pastor Hurt is the chair. Mr. Fly. And anyone else who wants to join us.
Good opportunity.
Was you on that board, Mr. Cox?
I agreed to be on it, but I'll, I will um abstain until the appointment comes down. And, okay, so you can put a question, mark sign the name.
Just go ahead and be on it, man.
Have a question. Do you have to be a member of the commission to be a part of the subcommittee?
Sure.
So. My um appointment expires next month. And I'm not sure if I'm coming back, but I would like to remain on the subcommittee if possible. So if possible, I'd like to join on the education if I can.
Bingo, we got. Now, when you say you might not be reappointed, it's because of your choice, like it won't be. Okay, okay, I got you, okay, I'll catch. We can continue, uh, this.
Help, subcommittee? We know that was.
Subcommittee. I'm the chairman uh for that, Pastor Johnson. And uh it would be a delight to have others to join the help uh department, because. There are some things that we're gonna do in twenty-three is have a health fair. And uh. Uh, we will still be doing COVID tests uh for twenty-three, so. It would be a plus to have other in- individual on that help committee. Thank you.
Anyone interested in the help committee?
Are you the, you the only one on health? I mean, as of right now?
Yeah, for right now. There there are other individuals.
Right.
But uh as far as uh working component, there there is other.
Well, me personally, I I don't wanna be on every subcommittee, but I'll jump on there to help you out. You can pin it down, Ms. Conley, him and Fly.
Anyone else?
Say more.
Good job.
There you go. Thank you.
Brother Chairman, because we will be doing, like I say, uh, health fair this year. Uh, at at Pentecostal Temple on the lot. Uh, and there will be other activities that we will be sharing across the city. Uh, that would not be the only spot, uh, because we are looking at other site sites. To have the COVID tests in other areas. So as we go along, uh, this committee will know uh the sites. Uh, for those COVID tests and the health fair as we go along. Thank you.
Thank Pastor Johnson. Okay, until you see anybody don't wanna be on.
Employment?
And be myself as chair.
Somebody might still wanna be on health, because it's only me and Pastor Johnson.
Right, so Pastor Johnson represents the minority health. So he has others that are working out of there.
Great job. Way to jump in running, uh, Pastor Johnson. You continue, Ms. Conley, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Employment?
Myself as chair, Hogan, uh, Pat Harris, Black Expo. Brett Kelly, Sanitation Department City, and Rodney McCormick, Commission.
Would you repeat that?
That was bad, repeated, she trying to write it down.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, myself as chair. Hogan from the commission. Pat Harris, Michigan City Chapter, Indiana Black Expo. Brett Kelly, Sanitation Department, City of Michigan City. And Rodney McCormick, Commission.
Secretary Conley, I would like to be on the education also, I mean, uh, employment also.
Okay.
I show.
Chairman Fly, employment.
Yes, you can have me, uh, I'm just gonna be pen a little bit.
Well, you and all of them by virtue being chair, so doesn't matter.
Oh.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Justice?
Um, I'll stay as co-chair if uh Ms. Benny will, is willing to do it, or she can take the chair. Doesn't make me no difference.
I'm co-chair anyway, so I remain as co-chair.
Yeah, so we have Miss, Miss, Miss Benny. Myself. Mr. Fly. And.
Mr. Cox.
And Mr. Cox, I ain't gonna let him get out of this one. And Mr. Cox and um. And anybody else who wants to join.
And we also have uh Pastor Hurt.
Forgive me Pastor Hurt, yes.
And Brother Chairman, I would like to be a part of.
And you did say that as well. You know, I got a short memory, I'm getting, I'm fifty-five now.
Well, that memory ain't short, you remember anything, don't tell that field.
Anyone else? For criminal justice? Okay, we move on to the last one, social factors.
That's fate.
I will cheer, say more.
I like the added to it as well.
No need to add, be I'm president, they say I'm on anyway.
Anyone else interested?
Linda just said she's gonna be on there.
Okay, Linda, okay.
Brother Chairman, I think there will be others that will join in that's outside of this. Committee that will join in, I think by time as the year go on, uh, we will have a full staff. Uh, individual to make everything work, uh, so we can uh do a. Wonderful job on this social status, uh, African American, uh, male.
Yeah.
Uh, committee.
Always, uh, if I can.
Yeah.
I think we should extend that outreach to people. For all of the subcommittees to see uh, members of the community. Sorry, members of the community are available um or have ideas or wanna join in on subcommittee meetings, you know? Maybe we can use the Facebook page as a platform for that, not only to talk about. What the meetings are, but uh to solicit ideas or even people who wanna join in.
Unlike a community, take a village.
Well, Miss, Mr. Hogan, I think you just did it. Um, this is open invite to anyone that's listening to us or hearing us. We would like for anyone to join any one of our subcommittee or all of our subcommittees. Um, we will, we will, we always have meetings and we like to get things done, so. Uh, to the viewing public, please join us. And um just send a letter to the clerk's office, or reach it, reach to us on Facebook, reach out to us on Facebook, thank you. Yeah, I did, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you. Good idea, you know, it takes a village, everyone. So um, you know, no one's bigger or smaller, we can get it done together. Oh, is that the last one?
It was the last one.
So we're gonna hold off on the reports for the subcommittees now that we didn't got new members on, you know, everything is concrete. So we can go from here, so we don't have to, unless anyone have a report that they just wanna do right, right now. Speak on or say something. Pastor Johnson, was you hitting your light?
I think I sent out the flyers to everybody, but the past, um, Pastor Johnson wanted to mention the health fair. The uh Black History Committee is having a uh health fair at the YMCA on February the eleventh, which is this Saturday. From um eleven to two at the YMCA, the health fair. Um, all are invited, the all the community flyers have gone out and um. That's it. There, oh, there'll be screenings and um uh free items and discussions. At the health fair.
Sound interesting. Uh, Fly, you be there with our table? Yep, yep, yep. Okay, dokey, uh, any more discussion so far as uh? Anybody wanna just have to, wanna do a report, but we don't have to, uh, if you want to, you can, yes, Ms. Conley?
It's not on the report, but I was just wanna follow up, Mr. McCormick. When are we going to the Sabo?
Oh, that was. I'll let Ms. Benny answer that question.
Well, um, at the last meeting, I think I shared it at the last meeting. Um, I submitted a report that stated that we had a subcommittee, committee meeting. And we were looking at sometime uh towards the end of February, beginning of March. Um, I did get an email from the Controller's Office that they uh submitted the request. Through the Board of Works and they actually have the check um waiting for me in the Controller's Office to um pick up. So that coming here in the near future, we're gonna have another subcommittee meeting to kind of finalize some of the plans. Um, so it should be within the next two months.
That's good, make sure the weather, the weather, it look like we having no winter anyway, so.
Most important factor is that we also have to put permissions lists together.
Right.
To make sure.
Some details.
Yeah, that will happen, so. And uh. Just in case uh anybody wonders why I'm still here. I was renominated. I just wonder, did you know that? I could have probably somewhere thinking, well, I wonder what he's doing here.
Been going nowhere, man, we're gonna be bobble.
You're here, you're here.
I'm making different real brief, I just wanna say something, I'm gonna say it again. We had a lot of dissension, a lot of stuff going on last, the last uh board we had. Everybody, we know somebody, we can get the money, we just gotta go ask. Um, there's a lot of you that's been on here for quite a while. And and we can make this happen. I don't care if you bring in twenty dollars or four thousand dollars. We have to start getting out and working harder than we, than we have in the past. We get the money, we can put on programs. It will not work if we don't have the the funding. And whatever we do, please, let's don't do what the other people do, the other organization. We wanna open ours up to everyone. We don't wanna, we don't wanna leave no one out. Anybody that wanna come through them doors, they can come through the doors. If we gotta use City Hall for, for some programs, let's just do it. It don't make no difference if it's only one person or twenty-five hundred people. Let's start letting the public see that we are united up here. That don't mean where we have to agree on everything, but we are united on what we have to do as commissioners. Thank you.
Perfectly said, uh, Vice President McCormick. Anyone else wanna slightly carry on, piggyback? Okay, um, so we, we really rolled out, you guys, so Tommy Kalabich, he had his hand up in the public. And we got a little time before the actual public comment. You wanna speak on, say something real, uh, that you raise your hand, Conley?
Yeah, Tommy Kalabich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. There is a great benefactor that we can use for our funding, for our trips to the DuSable Museum or picnics for Black History Month. But is the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation. They have a grant writing cycle, it's usually in October. They have uh, for, it's an agreement through the Boyd Development Fund. They get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. They start in nineteen ninety-five. The first hundred thousand goes to Washington Park Zoo, the next six hundred fifty thousand open to any nonprofit that wants to. Apply to receive the funding. It could be through your fly high use services, so that's something we really need to look into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kalabich, but unfortunately, I don't think social status about American males is a five-one-C-three organization.
Your fly high use services is.
Talk about. Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm already on top of it. Thanks, Tom. Thank you, brother. Actually, I'm the director, yeah, of the. And so is Ms. Benny.
On that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Coffee, you be having valuable information if ones didn't know. I appreciate that, brother. Aren't you on a, a subcommittee?
I can only work on behalf of the fire department.
I got you. They probably need you more there anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Really, really technical, and I gotta. Work on it.
Okay, last time we had a little mix-up between the good order and public comment. I think Mr. McCormick wanted public comment, I wanted good order, we took a word on that one. So we gonna go with uh what the agenda say, good of order, commissioner roundtable, being public comment and adjournment. And we gonna get out here before now. Yes, Commissioner Cody?
Just for public, or just for good of the word, I just wanna publicly acknowledge Commissioner Stacy Benny for. Tireless efforts, uh, not only uh in making sure that things are running the way they should be here. But following up on things and he's continuing to push forward uh with the agenda that we all should be following. So thank you, Commissioner Benny.
Thank you, Ms. Benny. Decent and all, I was gonna to say that for you. You say that first decent and order, that's Miss Decent and Order right there. Okay, uh. I love laughter and enjoyment, you know, in no sense of having mugs and brows, let's be good for each other. Anybody else with uh good of the order commissioner roundtable?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. McCormick?
Last night, um, we had a city council meeting. Uh, Councilmember Matt brought up a, a proposal to do a study on trying to bring a multiplex. To Michigan City. Um, it was very expensive. I, I think we was in the neighborhood of thirty million.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, and and it was gonna, it couldn't be started until twenty twenty-five, I believe, that that's what it was told to us. Um. I think some of us need to go back and look at that meeting. And for some reason. Some reason. Some of our board members, city council members. Have lost their childhood. That our kids are everything in this world. At least mine is to me. We gotta make sure. We do something for the kids. We got problems with guns. Um, violence, our kids getting kicked out of school at a record rate. Um, they're being deemed um. Um, they're being deemed, um, uh, gang related on just basic. Just basic disorder conduct or whatever it may be. If the kids don't have nothing to do. If the kids don't have nothing to do, what do we expect them to do? Um, the playground was everything for us, for me when I was growing up. Um, the park department, I feel has done a horrible job. We have all the parks in, in the world, we got a lot of parks in Michigan City. And for some reason, when I go through the first world where I live at, and I go through Lakin where I was born and raised at. Our playground looked the same as when I was twelve. But we wanna go to the beach, and it's okay, we wanna go to the beach, and we wanna. Put millions of dollars out there at a playground where most of our kids won't even go. Matter of fact, to be honest with you, they had it their way, they wouldn't want us out there. See, we gotta talk about the real issues that's plaguing our city. Systemic racism is real, like it or not. So what I've been trying to push for is making sure our neighborhoods, playgrounds. Get the much-needed repairs that they need. There's somebody back there working, if we can get the much-needed repairs. And get glass backboards at our playground, our kids won't have to walk all the way to Gardena Park. Or walk over there and um. Be uh, labeled troublemakers, or go back to your neighborhood or whatever. It's just reality, we have to do better, but the voices need to be heard from that end to that end. We gotta start showing that these city council meetings and let these council members know that we part of this too. I've been voting all, since I turned eighteen, I've been vote. We have to step up. And let them know that we had enough. If we don't give back to these kids now, what future are we gonna have? We all, I'm fifty-five, I, I'm, I'm to the point now where it's like, God has blessed me. I don't know what tomorrow gonna bring for me, but I have thirteen-year-old and they got a bright future. And they need something to do, other than just go to a playground that's ran down, tore down, and ain't, there's nothing going on. Please, y'all, everybody, let's, let's just let our voices be heard, Black History Month. Let's talk about real issues and quit wearing, putting on dark sheikies and poofies for one moment. And pretend like we really care about the community, let's get to these city council meetings and show some unity, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Commissioner McCormick, um, good orders on me right now, but I'll go last, anybody else want to go good of order? Uh, we gonna go down line right here, Mr. Kara, we could, you know, we just go down that. Oh, he did his first, uh, okay, go ahead, brother.
Mr. McCormick, uh, I don't know all the quote-unquote particular individuals. Of this city, and I'm gonna make it my effort to do that. Uh, is there any way that we can call the park commissioner in? And have a discussion with them and ask them why. Uh, uh, our parks are not up to par. Is there any way we can do that?
Yes, it is, and I will make sure that everybody, we will, I will send out a group email, um. I try to stay away from emails lately, but I will send out a group email to the next park board meeting, and I'll give you the date. And I hope you show up with me, I show, I come, I don't have to be the one to speak. I'm good, I'm a foot soldier, I'm good at standing in the back line and getting to doors and, and, and pushing a message, whoever wanna speak. Please feel free, I will make sure you get that, and since you brought that up. It's, it's not illegal for you to run for office, anybody can run for office. And we gotta listen closely to these candidates who are running. If they don't have our best interest at heart, you shouldn't vote for them. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Rodney, Mr. Anderson, question for comment. How are the parks, I'm not familiar with the parks here, how are they staffed? Individual parks, are they staffed at all, 'cause I've not seen, those I've driven by, I've not seen, like even a cubicle out there. So they're not staffed?
Yes, um, no.
Okay.
No, they're not staffed, when I was twelve, uh, ten, when I was in Lakeland, they used to have, uh. They used to have somebody from the playground that comes in.
You good.
Yeah, okay, we used to have a person come to the playground and, and they used to do activities with us. That's gone, so that's all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay, next on good of orders, since we running good time.
Mr. Chair.
That's right.
As a suggestion, now that we have a secretary, you know, it's not. Impossible for us to draft a letter requesting the parks superintendent to attend our next month's meeting, just ask him questions. I mean, give him an opportunity, he doesn't have to. But it's just a suggestion, at least we're getting information straight from the horse's mouth versus hearsay.
At least post the question. What do we need to do? You know, even it doesn't have to be hostile, it can just be what do we need to do to improve this situation, you know what I'm saying?
I got you.
So, yeah, it doesn't have to be us grilling them about why things happen, but more or less. Would these happen moving forward to improve the situation for everybody, you know?
Uh, we got two people, who, who was first, Coach or someone? Okay, Miss Moore.
Yeah, I still think we need to attend the, uh, the park board meeting, we can do the letter, but we still need to attend the meeting.
Okay.
We could do them both.
Change, man, okay, that's great, we rolling on out, you guys, so, um, we got any more specifically good of order, Pastor Carol? Yes, there you go, Pastor Carol, I turn your mic on, you ready?
Yeah, I sure am.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to let y'all know that I'm old, I'm older than all of you. I, I just had another one.
God bless you, yeah, yeah.
Uh, uh, one short, just one short.
From a hundred?
Uh, uh, I'm, just, I'm speaking now. I mean, I get another chance, uh, 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 this one short of eighties. No, one short, one short. It's good, it's good to be around your children. That's all I got to say. My gosh.
Man, we love you, Pastor Carol, you keep us in good spirits, man.
I love you guys too, you know.
Okay, I'm gonna get my good order real fast if I possibly can. Um, my good award isn't real long, but it is intensive, and uh, so what we got going on here with my good award is that. Back to the schools, they're, um, like McCormick said, uh, they're, they're suspending people and, uh. Majority, I hate to be uncolored, but majority, um, majority of them are young black kids. And uh, almost everyone in Fly High Youth Program is all AKs milk kids. And I asked them what was the situations or what had happened, and from my knowledge, it's very minute. With a very extensive suspension or expulsion. Um, also, um, on the good of order, just to get that AK part out of the way. Also, the criminal gang activity charge, this is something that is. That needs to be eradicated, it needs to go back where it come from. It doesn't make any sense to myself, I'm just speaking on my opinionated. It don't, it doesn't cure anything, all it do is hurt something. It opens up doors for discriminatory actions by the authority that's pushing on that charge. And majority of my uh, research has been, once again, young black children. You know, uh, we don't have to go through the instruments of the charge, but basically, if you're. Piled up with each other, they have the right or choice to give you a felony and call you a criminal gang activity motivated, uh, group. And that is totally disrespectful and discriminating. I had a youth that got ate up by the police dog in our session of Fly High Youth the other day, and I asked him, I said, can I ask you about it? And he said, go, go ahead, go ahead, so I said, um, said. How did it, what were you thinking when that dog was sitting there biting you and eating on you, you know, and uh. He was like, the man wouldn't pull the dog off or nothing, I was just on the ground, he just kept letting him bite on me. And so I just wanted to put that vivid relation out there, realization out there, then I said, well, they gave you criminal gang activities, I, I know. Why, um, he said, I don't know why they do that, he said, well, I, you know, he was totally dumbfounded with that. And that's a felony charge, and if you on the youth record, they say it get erased, it don't. You know, you get something trouble in preschool, it's gonna be on your record, you know, I, I said. But basically being an extra, but it's still on your record, so he was like, I don't know where that came from, I. You know, and I looked at him, I said, I know you don't, and uh, and it's in a set. And I said, we working on it, I'm trying to work on it, I'm on a commission of, uh, the status of you. Males and even females, you know, I, I, I don't think they should be excluded. Um, but uh, yeah, he was dumbfounded with that charge, and so. As he get older and go putting in his resumes and they do their criminal background checks and all of the following. That's gonna show up there, it's gonna say criminal gang activity when he was younger. And um, it's just a cold package to have to have on you right out the gate. Right out the gate as a youth, you never know if you change or if, even if you're doing, if you, you might not even be wrong. A wrong person, you know, it's, so we definitely, I know Pa- uh, Pastor Johnson, even. Uh, Vice President McCormick, and even myself, we all last meeting said, yeah, we'll go here, just set it up, let's go down there. And talk to this police chief about what was the necessity of emergen- immediately. Putting this charge out there as a felony, and uh, if you go through your records, it's majority black youth. Um, what was, what was, what you're gaining by this, 'cause you're not, you're not stopping nothing. What you're doing is telling them they can't be around their, their family in bunches, they can't, um. Be with their friends in bunches, they can't, you know, it, it's just terrible, and I hope Pastor Johnson and Mr. McCormick. Is still game with making the moves to the, uh, or setting the date or some kind of scheduling. With the police chief, so we can, uh, go down there and have this a discussion, at least a discussion, at least let's bring it to the table. And let's talk about it, let's see what's the reasoning. Of this charge and what, what do they think is gonna benefit, what is it benefiting other than hurting young youth? At an early age, so we got a little bit of time, and that's, uh, oh, and also this last time, um. Good order, I'm leaving out the endorsement, remember, okay, good of order, Fly High Youth Services in the building. I had to say that, because we are, we are blooming, and one thing about it is, it's a perfect fit. Social status African American males, Fly High Youth Services, any other organizations but predominantly black. Let's get together and do it, because what I'm saying is, we have to look out, I mean, no races or nothing. But we got to look out for our youngsters and also dogs, um. Specifically, unfortunately, because we not going, uh, we not being chosen out the blue to. You know, somebody else looking out for us, God bless you, Miss Conley, there you go.
I don't know what goes on at the high school. I don't know what goes on at the high schools, public or private, but where are the parents? How do we reach out to the parents? If your kids are being suspended from school, being labeled as gang members, where's their uproar? Where are the parents?
I can give you a quick answer on some of that, uh, some of the students that's with Fly Youth and then AK and all this uproar. They there, they just don't know where we at, well, I don't say we at, but the direction. You know, um, who to go to specifically, 'cause you go to the police station, they cut you out, pitch you out. They get out of here, you know, they, they be kinda mean with them, you know, and so the direction, they be like, well, I don't pay for attorney to. Specifically go after this certain. Tied up, you know, we, it's all about ignorance, ignorance mean not knowing.
Right, but I'm thinking, you know, they used to have like PTA meetings or parents, group meetings, parents used to meet. Just to see what they can come up with, maybe, may not cost you any money, but parents need to come, come together and let's say. What's happening, and then we can give them information, give them, um, literature that they may be able to have.
Yeah, I was gonna say, social factors and also the education, uh, subcommittee, so. If, if you're on there or you're interested in, um, continuing the dialogue, um, regarding some of those. Concerns as far as what's going on in the school, the relationship with the police in the school. I would say get on the education, because you guys can elaborate.
How do we reach the parents, uh, do the churches have, um, meetings that they just have for parents? But about the very concerns, I don't know.
That will go under social factors also, I mean, you guys are gonna have to get involved in these subcommittees. And brainstorm and, and to have a dialogue to see what you wanna do, how you wanna do, if you wanna invite. Certain target groups in, certain, um, um, just any type of group in to have that conversation to try to make. Some impact and move forward, that, that's my input on that.
But I do want, um. I do wanna give the, uh, LaPorte County NAACP phone number, because the, the parents do need to contact the NAACP. We are active, we will take up your report. Two one nine, two two nine, three five, two four, that's the LaPorte County NAACP. And, um, please call that number, parents that are having issues with your children, please. Call the NAACP, two one nine, two two nine, three five, two four.
Okay, quickly, do you have any idea what a percentage of these children are trouble youth, come from homes with. Both parents or with, uh, actually biological parent? That's a big part of the problem is there, I see them coming through the system, and a lot of times they've been neglected. Themselves, and they finding a way, they find a way to groups, and these are not gangs. And these are not gangs, if you, if you got a basketball team around here, they gonna call it a gang, so. What has to happen though, is that we're gonna have to build an apparatus that allows us to start parenting. Allows us to start parenting and doing what has to be done for these kids, sometimes these kids don't have the facilities. To go to, to ask for help, and if a child is being raised, if a child like you saying. Calling his grandma or mama, and his mama back, then you know there's a break, you know? It's, it's not a lost cause though, no, there's not a lost cause, so we can't let it be that.
Yeah, Commissioner McCormick.
I, I'm just gonna try to be brief, Miss Moore, I don't mean no disrespect to the NAACP, I'm a member there as well. They've been here for quite a while, and we still got these problems. One thing I do know that's consistent is you. I know that you show up at them school board meetings, just like I show up at them school board meetings, we quit, we can quit delegating this to. To a group of people for some status, and we can get out here and change the status that they putting on our kids. Me and you by ourselves can make a bigger difference than the NAACP right now, no disrespect. We know what we have to do, when we have the, the vibe, when we have the superintendent of schools African American. The assistant superintendent is African American, the president is African American. But yet, it seems like with today reporting and, um, other things in the juvenile center. It seems that there's a lot of African Americans being affected in a negative way. And until we are willing to quit trying to be polite or politically correct. We will never win the battle for our kids, and if my kid is doing something wrong, I hope you advocate for it. If your kid is doing something wrong, and, and, and they doing them wrong, I hope you advocate, I will advocate for it. That's where it comes in, have you been at the board meeting, me and you both, we only get three minutes to talk and file our grievance. Nobody knows the process of grievance, so I'm just gonna leave it at that, 'cause we got, we got a lot to do on social facts. Thank y'all for y'all time.
Okay, can we go to public, oh, anybody else a good order, then we go public comment, we running about two minutes over? Uh, anybody wanna quickly do a last bit of, uh, good of order?
I'll share mine for the next meeting, I'll share mine for the next meeting.
Next, do you wanna, you can.
No. I like to stay on time.
Okay, I'm sorry, Miss Benny, thanks, uh, public comment, Tommy Clod and name.
Tommy Clod, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, and I'm also now the Michigan City Fire Mayor Commissioner, McCollum Council. Uh, happy Black History Month, everybody, first of all, this to Mrs. Commissioner Faymore and Linda Fay Conley, I want to make you a. I want to make you aware that the Indiana Attorney General has about over one hundred dollars of funds from the Michigan City Chapter of NAACP that needs to be claimed. You can find this on their website at indianaunclaimed.gov. It was left in a PayPal account through, this is Nikki Troutman. Has her address on Hendrick Street. She had a fire about a couple of years ago. So that money really is, it's all yours to, for the taking. You need to file, it's easy to file their documentation. They'll send you the check for it. And then maybe we'll ask Mr. Mr. Mrs. Scully about that. There's a flying, so it's a flying company on, on twenty. They have, so they got money in there, but it's not Fly High. I like, I looked. Um, and that was actually reported on WEFM. You reported on that, um. I um, I wanna say um, attention to all the upperly mobile teenagers, young adults and uh, and college students out there. Michigan City, Washington Park, lifeguards needed. Lifeguard twenty-five fifty an hour. Assistant head lifeguard twenty-six fifty an hour. Head lifeguard twenty-seven fifty-four an hour. Requirements, must have a, obtain a lifeguard certification. Must be sixteen years or over, so sixteen and up. Uh, must have a valid driver's license. Will have a free one-front lifeguarding course, days to be determined. Submit applications in the Michigan City Fire Department Administration Building at twenty-five ten East Michigan Boulevard, right next to McDonald's or City Hall right here at one hundred East Michigan Boulevard. For information, send us a message or contest at two one nine eight seven three one four four zero, extension four four zero. Or send an email to our poker information officer, miss Tia, Tia Free at T Free at E Michigan City dot com. Here's a chance to make more money than your parents do. Thank you.
I move for a German.
Uh, bingo.
Thank you. Good leading, everybody.